Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Reno County Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 30th. We have two meetings today, back-to-back. One will be our regular business meeting. We have a short agenda there. And then we'll go into study session for a work session on matters related to the Reno County Fire Department. So this time, if I haven't already, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll have a prayer by Darren Lukafet of Crossroads Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. God, we are so thankful for this time today, for the commission that meets here, to care for our town, to care for the people that reside here in our community. Thank you, Father, for grace and mercy and peace over this room today. May you bless what is done, what is thought of, and what is carried out here today. And Lord, we also just ask that you will continue to bless the people of our community, that you will continue to move us and direct us in ways that glorify you and honor you. And thank you, Father, for, in all things, calling us closer and closer to your image as Lord, King, and God. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, again, welcome, everyone, to Reno County Commission. Appreciate everyone being here today. The next item on the list today is public comment for items not on the agenda. Looks like there's a lot of people here for the fire discussion. If you do want to make comment, I think we'll allow you to do that during the study session, if that's okay. Is there anyone here for any other items that would like to make public comment today? Hearing none, does the commission have any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, are we going to be recording this study session? I think with the amount of interest, at least that I've heard, I think that would be preferable, in my opinion.
Okay. Generally, we don't record them. I think that's been past practice. So why don't we just put that as 7B if you want to discuss it?
Okay.
Is that okay? Let the rest of the commission? And then Commissioner Bogner, I didn't get to talk to you ahead of time. We had talked briefly about some questions you had related to the ongoing zoning regulations for solar. Did talk to staff. Neither of the zoning staff are able to be here today, so if it's okay with you, we might push that to next meeting.
That will be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing nothing else, staff doesn't have any?
Well, were you contacted about a missing? Had you two communicated last night about the issue that I brought up? If not?
Do you want to talk about it today?
I can't talk about it publicly.
Okay.
But we need to have an executive session if we can at the end of this.
Do you want to do that after the 7A? I guess if you guys were...
Yeah, I would think after 7B or whatever you added, we could do it toward the end.
Okay, well, we'll have...
Those are the things I'd like to bring up. Thanks for...
Well, if you know what the matter is, why don't you confer with Patrick and get me an executive session motion? We'll plan on a 7C for executive session. So unless there's objection, that's how we'll amend the agenda today. Hearing none, we'll keep moving. So public hearing. Staff want to brief us on this before we open it up?
Okay. So the Reno County having the public hearing today for A-PAC Kansas project. A-PAC is looking to build a office complex, training center, additional items on property that's in the unincorporated area just outside the city of Hutchinson at Avenue G and Airport Road. So part of the IRB is kind of part of financing mechanism for them to get tax exemptions. And they have requested this. Wichita State had created a cost benefit analysis showing a positive return for Reno County, the city of Hutchinson, all other parties of school district, pavement school district. So Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell is here today along with a couple of representatives from A-PAC.
Does Sarah want to talk at all? Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell. We're bond counsel to the county. And we're here today for the first step on providing some economic incentives for A-PAC for their new office building and improvements that they're planning on making, as Randy mentioned. So the first step in any industrial revenue bond is holding a public hearing, which we're doing right now, and we'll take any public comment on this. I will mention that this is only being done, these IRBs are only being done to offer a property tax exemption on the new facility, so it's not going to take anything off the tax rolls, and to offer a sales tax exemption on all of the materials being acquired for construction, plus any furnishings, things like that. They'll be able to use the sales tax exemption to get the project constructed, up and running, and then it terminates. So there's really just those two benefits involved. This is not in any way a loan by the county, not a liability of the county, and you're only doing this at the request of A-PAC as an accommodation to give them those two economic benefits. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the process.
I think what we might do, just to get the commission fully informed, is let A-PAC, if you have anything to add, and then take some public comment, and then maybe bring you back up, Sarah, if that's all right. Is there anyone from A-PAC that wants to?
So first of all, I introduce myself. I'm Sean Riley. I'm the president of A-PAC Kansas. And we office out of here. We've been officing out of here for, next year will be 150 years. This company was started by J. H. Shears back in 1874. We love the community. We've been a big part of the community, and we employ a lot of people in the community. But what we do is we build roads. We don't build offices. That's not something we typically do. And so I've been with A-PAC for 36 years, and this is the first time we've had an opportunity to actually build an office. So we're pretty excited about it. You know, we like the community. We wanted to stay in the community, and I think this is just an effort to help us with that. You know, we have to go through a process with our main company to get all this approved. And with the help of this IRB, this will get us on the road to getting this done. We look at trying to start construction right after first of the year and then be done by the end of next year. And then there's going to be some other buildings, QC labs and stuff, that we'll be adding on over the next few years after that. So be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Well, let's... Is there anyone here for public comments? Chamber want to make some comment real quick? And then we might come back to you, but thanks. Appreciate it.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Deborah Tuftel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of our Greater Hutch Economic Development Partnership, we are really proud to be able to work with A-PAC on this project. They have explored a lot of different scenarios and opportunities and arrived at this being the best to secure a location for the future. And we think it's going to be a great attribute on Airport Road, is kind of the entrance, one of our entrances to the community and to Hutchinson, and is going to be an iconic facility and one that secures them here for the future. One of our roles as we work with companies that are growing and expanding is looking at tools like industrial revenue bonds. And you have a policy that allows for the issuance of those, but thereby also provides some incentives to the company. And that's really the purpose of the fiscal impact model, that we had a third-party run based on the economics of this project. And we provided that to Randy. It's a model that Wichita State University uses to measure the public impact by offering these types of incentives. And so you'll have it for your review, but it definitely shows a positive return, more than a dollar for every dollar that is offered as an incentive back to Reno County, as well as City of Hutchinson and other taxing units that are impacted by making that decision. But we're really pleased that A-PAC is choosing this location to do this for a number of reasons, not just the investment and the jobs, but that this is a division headquarters that allows them to bring people into the community for training. And they have several hundred employees across the state of Kansas and the region. And this will be a place that, once they get it built out, they will be able to bring in teams from those other parts of their divisions to Hutchinson and have several overnight stays and really showcase Hutchinson and Reno County as a place for their headquarters for this division. So we're pleased and thank you for your consideration of the industrial revenue bonds and also the tax exemption that goes along with that.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there anyone else here for public comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. Staff want to wrap up anything?
I would just say, I talked to the appraiser's office to see historically what Reno County has done with these. And it looks like all the IRBs we've done in the past have been for the full 10-year exemption. We didn't... There was one historical one that was quite a bit older that looked a little bit different, but it seems like roughly once or twice a year, this is an event that happens, the county's asked to do this, and we couldn't find many instances of it not being... of anything complicated being done, I guess. I'll just add that.
Okay. Comments, questions from the commission? Commissioner Parks?
I think it's a great tool, I'll just say that upfront, to help businesses or attract businesses to get here. But I hear return on the dollars and the tax exemption, not only just for building, but also property tax. Where does the return on the dollars come from? If we're not getting property tax or getting that? Is it just purely the investment of more help coming here? Or where are we looking at the return for... I think that might be a question that people in the public would like to know.
Maybe it's part of the... Well, maybe you'll...
And I know...
But with construction, you're going to have...
Forgot about that. Thank you. With construction, you're going to have more people come in. They're going to spend money. Yes, they'll get a sales tax exemption on the construction and the property tax, but all the other benefits of having people come in during construction, keeping employees here, and if they expand, that's kind of, I think, looking at some of the benefits that we receive, or the city and county receive in addition, you know, by giving the exemption.
If you'd care for me to comment and explain a little bit more about the impact model. So the impact model takes the jobs as well as the construction investment, and the model breaks that out over direct investment, which the direct investment is the jobs and payroll and construction. And then the indirect, based on the other spending in the community. And it uses some data specifically from the company on what new spending will be, new sales as a result of this facility. And then it takes that and breaks it out over a 10-year impact as well as a 20-year impact, and both of those numbers were positive. But it also takes the direct and indirect jobs. So the study revealed that with the 100 jobs at this facility, that's a payroll of $63 million and some change over 10 years, and $148 million over the 20-year period. And then it takes that capital investment of the 5.5 million and then derives the impacts. And it derived that there are a direct construction impact of 41 jobs for the period of the construction, as well as induced, for a total of 74 job impact over and above what the company is creating. And so then it takes the direct and indirect results of that payroll and applies some assumptions based on different employment sectors, which this one is in the manufacturing sector, and their NACs code is asphalt paving and mixing. And I can't tell you all the methodologies that WSU uses, but then the outcome derives what the output for the community is and a benefit to cost ratio. So for the case of the county, it provides a present value of net benefits and the rate of return on those benefits. The rate of return is 37.3%. So public benefits for the 10-year period outweigh the public costs for that period, and that's where you get that 37% return. Just to note, you know, the city's impact is slightly different. It's about a 2.54% return compared to the county's 1.37%. But most of that is because just the different taxation rates of the two different taxing entities.
Does this seek to...
Go ahead.
Real quickly, this does seek to employ more people eventually as well?
Right. Yeah. And then we want to make this our training center, so we're part of the...
So there will be more coming in, yeah. I might make a comment, it's probably not pertinent, but I just want to say this, but in the past, it seems like the services A-PAC has provided in Reno County, I've seen that reduced. I've seen other companies come in, and I wondered if somebody could speak to that. I mean, I see other companies laying asphalt south of town now, and it's not A-PAC Shears. And I just, I wonder... I want to preserve the business here, but I wonder why we're not seeing that if you're right here in the area with your corporate office.
And you might come back.
Yeah, if you want to come up to the mic.
That way everybody can hear you. Thanks.
So there's a lot of different reasons for that, but, you know, as everybody knows, most of the aggregate comes from the eastern side of the state, and they bring it in. And so we do the same. We have to bring it in. Right now, there is a kind of a sand battle in Wichita, where these sand companies are trying to make these developments for housing. And so they flooded the market with cheap materials in the area, and so that's kind of given a short-term benefit for these companies from Wichita to come in and compete against us here. You know, the other product or materials, oil and things, you know, we're on par with them because that comes from Kansas City and other parts of the state. And then they're just new companies. They started in the market, they come in with cheap prices, trying to get a foothold in the market, and we've been battling all across the state, actually. But it seems like it's kind of rebounding a little bit. You know, there was a company that got bought out recently in Wichita that was an asphalt supplier, and I think they had done some work around here in the past. You know, we're not always going to be the cheapest supplier, but, you know, I feel like we're always the highest quality, and we strive for that. We have the best quality control lab in the state. It's accredited. We have highly trained people. You know, that costs money, and we have to get that in our bids. And so we have seen a little bit of that, but overall, we still do quite a bit of work in the area.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioners, could I make one comment on that topic, too? Just to speak on behalf of A-PAC, that's probably been a pain point for their company, is actually that when they are in a competitive bid situation, they obviously, as the local employer, want to be the local source of that work. And so this is a great reminder for various units of government, that as we're putting out competitive opportunities, whether, you know, it's paving or others, that hopefully there is some sort of preference given for those that are investing locally. And, you know, sometimes it's a low-bid situation, but we do hope and encourage that when decisions are made for future projects, that A-PAC would be considered. And I also want to note that not only are they investing in this facility, they've continued to invest in land along that corridor. So a couple of years ago, they acquired another 32-acre parcel, partly where this new sand pit will go, as well as, you know, the corner of Highway 50 and Airport Road is kind of part of their future growth. So they definitely are continuing to invest in this area and hope to grow here in the future. So thanks for making that point, Commissioner Parks.
Thank you, Deborah. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yeah, I think over the years, Reno County has had a good partnership with Shears A-PAC. And we've contracted with A-PAC before to do several projects. And also just the purchase of some material. And that's been a really good benefit in that aspect from the county's viewpoint of using their tax dollars the wisest we could, and have appreciated this opportunity. Every once in a while, you get a company, like you said, that comes in, and they'll need a project or want a project just to break even almost, just to keep everybody busy. And I think that's something you see time and again from different sources as we bid things out. And I do know that we prefer local companies as much as possible we can. And they've been here 150 years, start up here, and a good local company that will probably be here for a long, long time. It's not a company that just comes in here, and we don't know how long they'll be here. But this is a company, I feel, that's stable and has invested here along with the aggregates they need and the ability for us to purchase product from them, even if they're not the main road contractor on some things. So that's, I'm very much in favor.
Commissioner Whitson?
So I've got a question about the bond, if that's okay. So you said no risk to the county. What happens if, you know, for some unforeseen reason, there was a default on the bond? Does that fall back on the taxpayers or... Can you explain that? Because I did a lot of research on this, because I didn't know a whole lot about it, but I couldn't find an answer to that question.
No, it does not. The bonds are issued by the county, but they are solely payable from payments received by A-PAC to the county. And so if those payments from A-PAC to the county do not come in, the county has no responsibility and is in fact, is prohibited by law from levying any taxes to make any payments on the bonds. So the county has no liability if there is the remote likelihood of a default.
Thank you.
Mr. Bogner?
I'd just say that it's a good deal to keep companies that have been in this community for years here and help them stay here, because as pointed out by the study, they... this will be a positive benefit to the county and to the city. And we're always looking for new companies. We sure don't want to forget the ones that have been with us forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogner. I, too, want to just express the county's appreciation for the investment that A-PAC wants to do here and the chamber's work. I know I wasn't involved in all the particular details, but I think there were some previous opportunities that changed, and the chamber and A-PAC and the county staff worked pretty quick to pivot a little bit, to provide what A-PAC needed here for this investment. So appreciate all of the good work, Bond Counsel to Sarah, for moving quickly. It seemed like, once you guys got things figured out, you got this here pretty quick. So we're happy to, it sounds like, happy to support that as well and let you get moving. So without further comment, I'd see if there's a motion to approve. Actually, I'll close the hearing unless there's objection to that. And then, is that all we need today, is the hearing? There's no...
The resolution.
Okay, there is a resolution here. I missed that. What's the resolution number?
2022-23.
Is there a motion to approve 2323?
Motion to approve resolution.
study, they, this will be a positive benefit to the county and to the city. And we're always looking for new companies. We sure don't want to forget the ones that have been with us forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogner. I, too, want to just express the county's appreciation for the investment that AIPAC wants to do here and Chamber's work. I know, I wasn't involved in all the particular details, but I think there were some previous opportunities that changed, and Chamber and AIPAC and the county staff worked pretty quick to pivot a little bit, to provide what AIPAC needed here for this investment. So appreciate all of the good work. Bond Council, too, Sarah, for moving quickly. It seemed like once you guys got things figured out, you got this here pretty quick. So we're happy to, it sounds like, happy to support that as well and let you get moving. So without further comment, I'd see if there's a motion to approve. Actually, I'll close the hearing unless there's objection to that. And then, is that all we need today is the hearing? There's no...
The resolution you missed.
Okay, there is a resolution here. I missed that. What's the resolution number? Is there a motion to approve 2323?
Motion to approve resolution number 2023.
Commissioner Parks moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. Any final discussion?
I would just say, I've got a, I've got a little thing that I usually use a lot, so you may, may want to forget this next time I say it, but 37 mils times zero is still zero, any way you look at it. 37 mils times $5.5 million. You do the math 10 years from now, and that's real money.
Hey, Commissioner Hurst, any other comments? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Mr. Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Hold on, I'm just gonna do this right now. Because if I don't, Cindy will get after me. Okay.
There's two aside.
It looked like there was maybe just back-to-back signature pages on there.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get that executed today. And thank you for your continued investment in Reno County. Appreciate it. Business items, we did 7A. 7B... I didn't write down what 7B was.
Recording and broadcasting the study session.
Okay. Sorry about that. Commissioner Weitzel?
So I have received a number of public comments on this, or, you know, messages about this, this particular instance. And so I think it would be a good idea to have it on record for people to refer to and feel like they're part of the process.
Can staff give some background on, do we take minutes for study session? Is there a policy on the books related to study session? I mean, is it in writing on how we do this? And what's the previous precedent?
The previous, the, the short answer on minutes, and I think this is good for the public to understand, too. A study session is signaling to the public that we're not here to take an action. So I think, I think county staff take general minutes of discussion, but in terms of, from where I sit, in terms of making a motion for binding action, it's not going to occur today. That's the main significance of the study session. We're here to, it's, it's, you know, more of a brainstorming session and the chance for people to discuss ideas for the first time and really view them and not to just take action. We've, we've recorded some in the past, and we've not recorded some in the past, to be completely honest. And it's really, I mean, administration, I discussed it. It's, there's pros and cons to both. It's whatever you guys decide to do. So, yeah.
Got anything to add, Randy?
Just, yeah, it's great to have, I agree with Commissioner Weitzel, it's great to have a recording, but sometimes knowing that's a permanent record, that's always going to be there, people may be a little bit hesitant to really express their true feelings. And sometimes in a study session, when you're brainstorming, first time you're talking about it, you may think or say things that don't really make sense in the long run, but you're now permanently recorded on that. So there, that's kind of the, you know, the negative of recording it.
I guess I would, just my lived experience with commission meetings is, in a study session environment, sometimes a commissioner or person will say, I think this sounds like a great idea. And then later, they will decide it is not a great idea. So I just want to make sure everyone understands there is room for that in this environment. Lots of room for that.
Thank you. Other commissioner comments?
Yes, I will. I think, given in light of the representation here today and, and the insurmountable amount of contacts I've had in the last few weeks and over the last few months, given this topic, I think, John, it's probably appropriate in asking for it to be recorded. The couple we've had recorded since we've been in, in the commission, I don't believe have hindered what we've said as far as holding back from really analyzing a situation. And so I, I have no reservations about what I'll say. And I generally don't. But, so that is my two cents worth. I think it might be a good idea. I think there's some, I think there's some, I'm trying to figure out how I want to word this, some feelings out there about some of the things that have happened in the past. I'll probably say it like this, that probably need to be recorded, and things that were recorded in the past that have been overlooked and haven't been brought up in recent about the history of the start of this project. And so for those reasons, I'm kind of with John on this. I think it ought to be, ought to be talked about, so.
Any other comments?
Ordinarily, I would like to see the study sessions not recorded, because I think there's a lot of things that, that can be said that sometimes take a different opinion of it once it's recorded, that people cannot come up with some different thoughts on why that was said and how it was said and so forth. That's ordinarily what I would, I would, I would do. But I think probably in this case, that as disappointed as I was in that letter that came, I think maybe it's time to get this recorded. Other than that, I would not.
In this, in this case, I'm, I'm agreeable with recording it.
Okay. Sometimes we have a vote on this. It seems like there's good consensus to record it. Unless there's objection, we'll just instruct staff to record the meeting. Hearing none. We'll move on to executive session. And given the large contingent here, we'll, we'll, we'll move our meeting to a different location.
There's computer issues.
No problem. Would you like to, you can make it, and then I'll, you can read it, and I'll make it. Turn on your mic for a special.
Motion to move the board enter into executive session until, and this is a question for you guys, until when? 9:50 maybe? Or how long do you, Commissioner Parks, how long do you think?
I think 15 minutes, probably.
I'm going to, until 9:50 with the county administrator and county counselor. The subject matter to be county employee performance and the justification for the executive session is to discuss personnel matters of not elected personnel.
I so moved. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bogner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed 5-0. Okay, so everybody can stay. Motion passed five zero. Okay, so everybody can stay. Okay, we're back from executive session. Unless there's other items on the business meeting today, I'll adjourn the meeting.